Stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the people of which you stand, on your mission, under your job, in your visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Athens National for the first of two candidate PTO sponsors Athens City School Board and Forum. Each candidate will open with a two-minute introduction and while they are running for the school board. The candidates will be given 90 seconds to answer questions that were submitted and carefully vetted, so the questions will be fair and there will be no duplicates. There were over 100 questions received, so we took nine of the most common asked questions sent in by the Athens community. The candidates are encouraged not to mention another candidate's name during their answers. If this happens, the mentioned candidate will be given the choice of a one-minute debrief. Candidates will be given two minutes for closing remarks. The order of the candidates is determined by drawing through numbers 1 through 7. Opening remarks will go 1 through 7, the closing remarks will go 7 through 1, to keep it fair. If time allows, we will open the floor up for questions from the audience. The questions must be for all candidates to answer. We ask the audience to hold their applause until the end and that no sounds or visuals are permitted. Now to introduce our panel.
Good evening, my name is Misty Smith and I am the president of the Plains Elementary PTO.
My name is Andrea Foe and I'm the secretary of West Elementary PTO.
Hi there, I'm Carolyn Raischian and I am the West PTO president.
Hi, I'm Naomi Palton-Golter and I am representing the Athens Middle School PTO.
Hi, I'm Suzie Swank and I represent the East PTO, the PTO president.
And I'm Roger Bissel and I'm the PTO president for Morrison Gordon. Now with the candidates, they can introduce themselves.
My name is Jenny Klein. Can you hear me in the back? Yes, okay, good, thanks. My name is Jenny Klein, I have lived in Athens since 2005. I am the mother of three daughters, one Athens High School graduate, one high school senior, and one six-year-old who's in first grade this year. I also work at Ohio University, I had an assistant dean in university college, and my role and responsibilities there include leadership for academic advising and studio programs that help students be successful. So my day job is really in educational administration, and that's one of the things that I think makes me uniquely qualified for this position because I do have that experience over the lifetime of my career. I have really appreciated the education that my three daughters have received here in the Athens City School District. They have been enriched both in and out of the classroom, and sometimes I've had the opportunity to contribute to the enrichment of my own children and to other children. For example, I am a Daisy co-troom leader this year and providing a lot of opportunities for the girls through that. But I see that our community is in a difficult situation right now. I've never run for public office before, but I was inspired by both the national climate and our local situation where we have so many opportunities to make positive changes right now, and I feel like my voice, which is always if you work with me at work or collaborate with me at home, you know that I'm a collaborative person, I inspire others to do their best, and I work for the betterment of my community, that's why I'm running.
Getting used to this timer thing. My name is Sean Parsons and I'm a father of two eight-year-olds at Morrison Gordon Elementary that are in third grade. For those of you who have young twins or have twins on the way, you will eventually sleep, I promise you, it does come. I'm a, my, both of my parents were public school teachers, my wife was a former public school teacher. I teach at Ohio University, I teach jazz studies and music theory, I work with a lot of first-year students. And I always knew, and this has been going on for many years, that when I was ready to participate in public service, that the school board was that place for me because of my background and believe that education is the cornerstone of our society. Great educational opportunities, open up worlds for children that they never knew existed. I also have a, I believe that we have a moral and a societal obligation and a duty to the future of our local community and our country to support a climate of possibilities of education. I've been in every building in our district, I've talked with teachers in every one of our buildings, I've talked with our building leadership, I've talked with anybody in the community that will deal with me talking about public school education here in Athens City Schools. There is no silver bullet for all of the things that we are challenged with right now. We have to commit problem-solving from many angles, and progress is never a straight line. We need to, and we can't start with what we want as adults, but we need to start with our dreams of the future for what we want for our children and for our community. Tonight we have 90 seconds to answer major, major questions that surround our district that will include equity, finances, special education, communication, gifted programming, integration, and a whole host of other issues. And I hope that I'll be able to demonstrate how I will work through these complex issues and how I will be for every child, no matter where they're from or their ability, and I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Can you hear me back there? No. Okay, great. My name is Laura Alibi and tell me a little bit about myself. Education is the heart of my family. I'm currently the director of marketing communications for OU's Wyndham Beach School. But my most important position is mother to a sixth and a third grader right now at West Elementary. We all know that we have many complicated issues impacting our school district right now, and my concerns for the future of our children is why I've decided to run for the school board. I'm not a third politician, but I have a practical experience managing political organizations and private businesses along with the NBA. My viewpoints run through the lens of helping working parents in our district. Time after time, I lose little representation or consideration on board for working parents, single parents, or those who have limited childcare options. These include decisions made that resulted in the disintegration of transfer buses last year, which eliminated school choice and actual care availability, and the current discussion of upgrade-level schools which would be at different locations, which would be a hardship for working parents. I'm a passionate advocate for community-based schools, which offers small class sizes and intimate environment which foster respect for all children and brings about better learning outcomes. Before the discussion of facilities, funding, or personnel, we must put forth a strong strategic plan with the district, which we currently lack, and let, and not let buildings be our guide. As a lifelong communicator, my other goal is to increase transparency in communications between board and the community. This is especially true now where as a community, people lost trust beyond current board of education. They have not provided the leadership or shown that they can make decisions that best represent the community. Lack of transparency has led to suspicion of decision-making, and a recent survey of school district voters noted that the board has taken us in a wrong direction. It's time for a change, for the community members to work collaboratively together to decide on our goals, and for the school board to step up and provide the leadership to develop those solutions that will ultimately be supported and funded by the voters.
Is it on? Well, I can attest that the numbers were random, but here I am stuck in the middle again. My name's Paul Freiberg. I had been a resident of Athens City or Athens County for the last 32 years, 33 years. Hadn't quite moved out of the carpetbagger status, but I'm getting close. I have, in the last, of those 32 years, I was the middle school principal of the first 28th. I retired in 2014. I have nine children who went through the Athens City School District and had wonderful experience. I think I'm as invested as anybody in the community, both emotionally and financially, in the school district. It is one of the finest school districts southeast of Ohio, I want to see it stay that way. I applaud the work that the people that preceded us, whoever ends up doing this election, have done. It's a tough job. I think I have a unique perspective, I think that I could offer that to the school board if you wanted to do that. I'm running because I think these decisions that we're faced with are as important as any since I've been in town, and I want to be part of that.
Now there's a compared, okay, can you hear me now? Good evening, I'm Kim Boltsberry. I am a graduate of Athens High School, I went to Athens Middle School. I went to Morrison Gordon with Dr. Gordon rather. I have three children, my daughter's at the high school, my twins are at the middle school now. I'm a graduate of Ohio University. I am currently on the school board and I'm running for reelection. I'm a foreign member of the McClure Foundation, I'm part of the Athens City School, our school committee, as well as the nutrition committee, and the Athens City School Food Pantry. Anyway, the first four years on the board have been interesting, to say the least. We've had, we've had a new superintendent, we have some new administrators, we have had a lot happen, but we have a lot to be proud of. We have a balanced budget, last year and this year again. We have had some training opportunities for our teachers that are, are fantastic opportunities for our teachers, and we're bringing these world-renowned speakers to Athens. We have one-to-one with technology in the middle school and the high school, and we're almost there in the elementary buildings. We have a food pantry that's now open to all of our schoolchildren once a month. We have, in our high school students, the ASR tests are outpacing that of the state. We have so much to be proud of. I feel like I have been able to bring a unique perspective to the board, and I feel like we're getting started and it's time, I'm here to see it through. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bruce Knacki and I want to thank the PTOs for putting me down the line. After my tour in the Navy, my wife Nancy and I moved to Athens and then lived here for four years. Our son and daughter have come to Athens City Schools, went on to college, have very good jobs, are productive citizens in their communities, and are no longer out of quality. If re-elected, I will continue and aid in the betterment of the education of our students in Athens City Schools. My 16 years on the Athens City School Board, six years on the Ohio State Arts Association, Southeast Asian Executive Committee, three years on the OSBA Board of Trustees, two years on the TriCom Career Center in Nelsonville, and my one year on the OSBA Executive Committee has put me in touch with board members and districts of all ball sizes, all over the state of Ohio. Speaking with these board members from all over the state has given me a tremendous insight of what it takes to be a effective board member.
Hi, my name is Dave Hayden. You know, it's funny, we had one question in advance, and I know we're gonna get it, and we've all been preparing for these things. We've been preparing to talk about facilities, obviously, we've been talking, we've been preparing to talk about budgets and communication, equity and special services, a lot of different things, but for me, in some ways, preparing for dismal, for doing an introduction is probably the hardest. I'll start off and say that the first question that I asked myself almost six months ago is, why do I want to run for school board? My wife would ask me that question all the time. And that's a hard question to answer, I'm gonna do the best I can. I'll tell you a little bit about me. My wife Trish and I have lived in Athens here for about 12 years. We've got two children in school, absolutely love the schools, the children are thrilled to be in the schools, they come home happy. An eighth-grade daughter and a second-grade son. I was a first-generation college student, grew up in rural upstate New York in a district a lot like ours. Our district wasn't particularly wealthy, but we had fantastic public schools, fantastic teachers, and for me, they were transformative. My parents, there wasn't any question that I was gonna go to college, but really, it was the great program of the dedicated teachers and those who have taken up. I feel very strongly that community support and trust in those schools are what helped them out of the thrive. We have that here, we haven't not passed it, I think, a generation. But I also think that we have a lot of work to do to really engage the community fully as we start to make some very complicated decisions about the future of our district, things that are gonna change the way our district works in the next 50 years. I think that's a good thing. I think we've got some hard work ahead of us, the board, the current board's gotten started, a little slower than we thought it would.
One question was provided to each candidate, and it will be the first question asked. And it's with the facilities, we all know the elephant in the room is facilities. What do you see as the path forward for our district?
Well, it's hardly an elephant in the room. I think there's not a person here that has heard about the facilities' challenges. I get two questions when I'm knocking on doors. I get one is, where do you stand on the mega school? And will you please talk about something that'll improve education besides the mega school? I believe that the right thing to do for every child in our district is to find a community-supported solution to get our kids together before seventh grade, and I want to be super clear that this does not require us being under a single roof. We work alongside with people of all walks of life. I have spent my entire professional career in rural Appalachia. We have one school with 77%, 76% free and reduced lunch. We have a majority of our special needs students in one single school. We can do better. Our kids learn better with each other than learning about each other. The right thing to do is improve special education for all of our children, including our pre-K. This does not require a mega campus or whatever language we want to use to call it, but it will require us accepting some level of change to improve education in our district. It's what happens inside of our building that counts. We need the facilities to support the programming our community calls for and our kids deserve, but no school merits configuration is better than its teachers. And I promise to build consensus in moving forward here, to be an excellent listener, open-minded, and explore a wide range of solutions, to think with reason and clarity, and begin every question with, will this improve education for every learner in our district? Thank you. That was, that's what it sounds like when I talk too long? You said I could finish my sentence and I used a ton of commas, so... My apologies, I will, it's okay. Throw something at me next time. Our kids' timers were quacks when they were growing up on their phone.
Can you hear me back there? Thanks. So, I'm putting out this at a kind of a different direction than I think, and where I think we should have started at, and that's where we as a district should have come together and developed a strategic plan. Before we even started talking about buildings or people or anything like that, we should know where we're going and the goals that we want to reach as a district, and then center our decision-making around that. That being said, from the viewpoint of myself and many in the district, I feel that the most fiscally responsible way forward is to renovate or rebuild the K-26 elementary schools, renovate the high school and middle school, and not consolidate into massive new buildings. Instead, we need small class sizes in schools, which studies have proven lead to better educational outcomes and limiting the number of children per school in each grade. Although the studies show that schools with high concentrations of poverty, which we have experienced, do not perform as well, a proven solution to this is to redistrict the elementary schools after renovation to provide a better balance. I'm not in favor of elementary school consolidation. Putting all children in the district together, whether at a grade-level building or large buildings, would result in small children lacking connection to the school, their teachers, and each other. By making friends that they travel through school with, they'll be lucky to have one or two kids in the same grade with 200 kids at one grade level. K through six buildings enable mentorship from older children to younger, which grade-level schools in multiple locations will not achieve. It will also offer less opportunity and not more. Imagine 200 kids who all want to be in school play, and it's actually going to be a more competitive environment with limited opportunities. Thanks.
I can't disagree with anything that's been said. I come to this from the belief that we should establish what our goals are, if our goals are, our problems are, and what our goals are as a solution. If our problem is we're way under enrolled, we have too many children for the buildings we have, it's hard for me to see how building more buildings is a good solution to that. That was my initial thought when I first heard the facilities recommendations. It's all, if we are worried about distribution of poverty or distribution of eco-economically disadvantaged children, that's another concern that we can address. I don't believe that it requires a major building plan to achieve those two goals. I could be convinced, I suppose, but I'd have to see more data or more proof than I've seen so far. I think there's a lot of flexibility in the buildings we have. If we have buildings that are beyond repair, we should establish that, that the people know what buildings cannot be repaired or are too expensive to be repaired and move from that. But so far, I've not seen enough evidence to say the solution would be to discard them all and then start fresh with another big construction project. So that's my position on facilities, but I think it's open to discussion how we proceed in terms of solving the problems. But if the two problems are what have been identified, then that's my position.
Having grown up here and having gone to the schools, I see often the problems that we have still today when it comes to the imbalance. The problem is, is in the last 40-ish years, it's gotten worse versus better, and I don't feel like it's moving in a positive direction. We have amazing staff and teachers and the programming changes that are being implemented, you can see that in the students every day. My children come home happy, my friends' children come home happy, they talk about what they're learning about, their science experiments, what's happening in social studies. They love school, all kids love school. So we need to be able to provide a warm and safe environment for every student. We have an opportunity for 32% state match, and we have to take advantage of that. So my question has been, we need to ask ourselves before we go and spend millions of dollars, what do we need to fix? What, how can we improve for all of our students? I believe we have to have a better socioeconomic balance in our schools, it needs to be under 64, 60, 40 in all of our buildings. Our students need to be brought together before seventh grade. I like having multiple age ranges in each building. I like smaller classrooms. We must provide services for disabilities in all of our children of disabilities in all of our buildings, and all of our students should have the opportunity to be with students of other nationalities. Those are the things that I am basing my decisions on, and I feel that this compromise plan can accomplish that and keep our schools small, but yet bring the kids together earlier. Thank you.
Over the past months, much time and effort's been spent on this issue by committees, community meetings, regular board meetings, and no time was spent before a solution was found. I can safely say that we cannot keep our facilities as they are. The very first thing we need to do is be inclusive of all students. Whatever plan ends up being implemented, we cannot continue on the same path. Our enrollment is down, our funding is down, our buildings are out of date with current educational standards, and they are not energy-efficient.
Well, I know we're not supposed to mention names, so I'm not gonna do it, but I'm just gonna agree, I'm gonna start off by agreeing with the gentleman's estimate. I think what we're doing now is not sustainable. It's not sustainable financially, it's not sustainable in respect of equity in our schools, it's not sustainable in terms of providing special services, and we can't continue to have four elementaries in this building, in this district at least. I think we'd be foolish to pass up on a 32% rate of funding from the state. We're gonna continue to spend money to repair buildings, and it's throwing good money out there. I don't know what the solution is for how we put those buildings together. I would say that whatever we do, if we're gonna go out to the public and we're gonna ask for a lottery that has a $30, $40 million, $50 million prize tag, a flow of funding, we do need to get some broad consensus. And so I suspect that that means that the most extreme options are off the table because we all need to find something to do. So I think the second is that most likely we're not building a senior campus. I think it most likely means we're not gonna keep what we have now. The compromise that's on the table, which has two pre-K, three buildings, and one, four, five, and six buildings, is not perfect, and that might not be the best option, but certainly a start.
The question, the second part of the question is, what do I see as the path forward for our district? And I'd like to answer that by saying that first, the path forward needs to be passionate, which is described our community, and innovative and creative, and it needs to use a logical approach. There is a whole field of study called multiple criterion decision-making that takes into account stakeholders, the voices of the voiceless, the opinions of many different professionals, and all of the research involved. So whatever path, whatever the end result is, the path I would like to see is take is one that is very reasoned, measured, and inclusive, and that is also creative. The pieces of it that I believe need to be considered carefully are that programs and services are more important than facilities, that working families and single parents need to be considered. That's one reason that I don't like the grade band solution. I think if you're driving all over town to get three different kids from three different schools, that's a problem. The research needs to be considered. The rural community and school trust tells us that a grade level should not include more than 75 children, and those who suffer in large environments are from lower socioeconomic statuses. So those are some of the pieces that need to be a part of the solution, and we need to get there together. and we need to get there together.
Okay, question two, we'll start with Laura Alway. Question two is regarding priorities. There's two questions to this. What are the current strengths of the Athens City School District? How do you maintain them? And what do you think is the greatest challenge the district is facing? And what steps would you take to improve it? Laura?
So, regarding the strengths of the Athens City School District, my husband and I moved here in 2011 from central Ohio. And there, they have really, that's where I grew up, they have kind of what I call big box education, generic. It's kind of zombie, is the best way of describing it. That's not Athens. Athens provides a very intimate, individualized, close environment where I know that my child's teacher loves my child as much as I do. They take care of them, they look at a whole child approach to make sure that, you know, they have food in their bellies, that they are loved, that they're cared for. And I think you're not going to get that in a much larger environment in sort of a regularized way. So, I think that's definitely a strength, and one that I really, it would be a shame if Athens lost that, and that's part of why I'm here today. I think we have a lot of challenges facing the district right now. One is one mentioned prior, and that's the socioeconomic equity issue. And I definitely do think that that's an issue. I think that that also can be resolved using some techniques and tools that we have at our disposal without putting all the children together in a building. I think redistricting is something that hasn't been done in a good number of years, and we should take a look at doing that.
I think the strengths of the school district relate to one issue, and that is the support of the community. As someone has already mentioned, we have failed to levy here in a long time, before my time. And I believe that is the source of most of our other strengths. We're able to keep our class sizes small, attract the best teachers, attract the best people, and attract the best students from all over the county, and that is one of our strengths. And I think we ought to focus on that as one of the things we make sure we maintain. It does lead to the small schools, but that is also something that's based on the ability of the school district to pay for it. Those small schools all cost collectively, they cost more than one single building. That is personally, to me, a justification to going to a single building. That's certainly one of the choices that we made over the years, to keep those buildings as they are. It's not the first time, those who've been around as long as I have, this issue's come up. You know that we debated this 50 years ago or so. So, it's one of those questions that comes back and forth. The challenges have already been mentioned. We have facilities a challenge, we have old buildings, we do have unequal distribution of our economically disadvantaged students, and those need to be addressed. And I think there are ways to address it without one single campus.
We have so many fantastic things happening in our district. We have the best teachers and staff from the elementary buildings all the way to the high school. Our teachers are making a difference in our children's lives. They care, they're passionate about what they do, they're willing to go above and beyond for the students. And as a parent, I feel, it makes me feel good to know that my children are going to an environment that they are so loved in. I agree with you. I think our community is a huge factor in what is making our school district so positive. I think the parent involvement, having the parents being able to come into the classroom and work with math tables and reading groups, that makes a huge difference in the child's life, because that child may not be going home to a parent that would be able to help them with their math tables. And so, providing that service with the parents that can provide that service also makes our school district district great. Our issues are less funding and more people of poverty in giving our children a better socioeconomic balance. And if you can do that, I think we will all win.
You made my answer pretty easy. You know, I have to agree. Our number one issue for, for...
Pass there!
Oh, for strengths, obviously, is our teachers. They are, they're in the room, taking care of our kids, and that's our strength, I think, a big strength. And then our community, and we do have a great community. We have a community that backs the schools, backs our kids, and they have done that ever since Nancy and I have worked here. And we appreciate that, and the kids appreciate that. Our challenges are some of the ones that Kim mentioned. We have a socioeconomic problem. We have buildings that are old, infrastructures are old. Our maintenance and our custodial people make our buildings look wonderful, but you can't see inside the walls, under the floors, and what's going bad. They're old, they're old. We have low enrollment, and we have less funding, and those are the challenges, I think. And with the other fixes, the other challenges can be taken care of by fixing some of these elements, because if we can get buildings that aren't eating us out of house and home, we can put that money into an educational program.
You know, at some point, as this progresses, I'll get to actually answer first, not somebody else. I would have to agree, and this is pandering, that teachers are absolutely the biggest strength we have in the district. Our kids, so my daughters in eighth grade, we had kids that were struggling for nine years. And we have yet to have a year where either of our kids has had a teacher, or they weren't just in love. And I think that we need to do all we can to support them, provide them training, and provide them with equipment that they need, and provide them with time to prepare and learn new curriculum if they come down the road. I do think that the biggest problem we face is funding. It drives everything else that we do. We offer a lot more programming than a lot of schools around us in this part of the state do. But we're not doubling, we're not vexing, and the funding model's not going to get any better anytime soon. So, I think that we do need to look over the next few years at our existing programming, looking at the things that we do now, and then setting strategic goals for five years out. And then continually evaluating what we're doing and figuring out how we can best prioritize how we spend our money.
I agree with what everybody said about the staff. So, I'm going to pull out another strength that is really important to me. In our smaller schools, students have a lot of opportunities for mentorship both ways. From fourth-grade reading buddies to the DENS program, which is developing educational and nurturing students, or developing education and nurturing students. It pulls together one child from each grade and works on a project. And all of the school opportunities that are available, like being in a school place, things like that. That kind of mentorship that you need multiple grades in a building to have, I think is a really important part of the community experience that students have. You will never see a kindergartner light up in a store like they do when they run into their fourth-grade reading buddy. What kinds of challenges do we face? I think there are some very real, physical and physical challenges, but I think we also face a challenge of having a transparent and inclusive leadership team. It is time for us to be better listeners and to be innovative about creating solutions that meet the needs of all students, especially students with disabilities and those who need extra challenges in the classroom. So, those are some of the things that I would really like to see us improve.
All right, I'm going to start with challenges first, because I think I go last, so I have to do something different. Is that okay? All right. Allison, good stuff. We do have a lot of challenges, this is, you know, with our district. We have a funding model from the state. We get, decreased state funding is the new reality, and we have to work within that. We have changes to state testing, we have to work within those parameters as well. We have to, it's imperative, it's imperative that we address our inadequate services for underprivileged children and children of special education. We have aging buildings that we have to take care of now, because if we don't, we're going to be passing the buck down to the next generation of kids. We have to do something about that now that is the responsible thing to do. We have a disproportionate number of children in poverty and special needs in one school. We can move from the middle of the pack in our state ranking to one district that we are increasingly proud of. We have a challenge in finding community-supported solutions to our facilities issue. We're going to have to deal with things like open enrollment, all these conversations are coming. You know, there's the positives here. I mean, we have a unique fabric here in Athens, in Athens City Schools, and we have a community that cares. And our teachers are caring and they're dedicated. You know, if you go to the middle school and you go off to the library, there's a closet there that provides resources to children that need it. I spent an hour and a half today in one of our classrooms, and I was amazed at the quality of the teaching that was going on in this room. It just absolutely blew me away. Our teachers, our staff, they know our children, they know their families, they know our community, and that is something that we should all have.
Question three. Paul Frinl will begin with this question. Experience. How many board meetings have you attended in the past six months? What school buildings have you visited, and what are your takeaways?
I had to get this one, huh? I have not attended any school board meetings in the past six months. To be monthly honest, I had my fill of school board meetings in 28 years. I became aware of the issues at hand. I didn't feel like I needed to go to the meetings to be part of that discussion. I went to a lot of the facilities commission, what is called standing committee meetings, to express myself. And it was me frustrated that all my great ideas didn't move anywhere, and I'm being decided to run, because if I'm going to pay attention, I want to have hope. And so, the buildings that I've visited, I know the buildings all pretty well. I really can't go back to the middle school without shedding a tear, so I stay away from there. And my takeaways are, in the sense of what the facilities discussion has become, is kind of off now, I think. And I believe we need to get back to what are the goals we're trying to achieve, and how do we do that? Again, I think that is all achievable. And so, I believe that that's all done through the process we have, and we can take care of that in a rational way. Thank you.
Well, I've been to six school board meetings and nine special meetings. And that's just been in the last six months. I've been to almost all of our buildings in the last six months, except for Morrison-Borden. I've not been to that building recently. I love going to buildings that are... That and getting out the graduation diplomas are the two best things about being on school board. Seeing those kids walk across the stage, handing up their diploma. But in the buildings, you see so much that's happening. You can see the difference between the learning styles of children that might be hungry versus the children that have poor parents in the classroom. You can see the difference, which is why we're having these tough conversations now. I feel like we do a pretty good job, but we can do better. We can provide more, we can provide more for our students with disabilities. We can provide more for our students that are autistic. We can provide more for the students that are English second language learners. All kids should be able to have the opportunity to be sitting next to a child from Saudi Arabia or from Korea. They can learn so much by being around their peers, and they should have until fourth, seventh grade.
Actually, I've been to the same number of meetings as a kid. Roger Brown, who was another board member, myself, actually went to all the buildings, to assess those buildings, actually. And like Kim said, when you go through the schools and you see the kids, it is an exciting time to watch them, you know, doing whatever they're doing and having a good time doing it. But in our assessment of the buildings, it takes me back to the last question, to the last question, and that is, the assessment of the buildings is not good. So, my takeaway is, you can use this, I used this once before. You can polish the kind of paint, but in the end, it's still paint. You can paint it up, you can polish it up, you can, whatever you want to do with those buildings. They're old, and they're getting worse, and they're going to cost more money if you keep going with it. And so, my takeaway is, the good part is, obviously, watching the kids in the school buildings, but you can give it out to other facilities to do all that anyway.
Well, I think I've been to all of those meetings except for the one that's not. And there have been a lot of meetings. I'm racking my brain here, I'm thinking all the time. I've been in all the buildings, I'm not sure, I've been to Morrison West in the past six months, but I've been into all of the buildings. And I would say one of the things that I enjoyed with both of our kids was both volunteering in the classroom and walking them into school every morning. I'm not allowed to do that anymore, my son insists now, and the bell rings, I have to start walking away. What are my takeaways? I'll tell you, I'm excited to not talk about buildings for a while. So, I would like to talk about my experiences not being on board and being at what felt like 10 million meetings in the past steering committee meetings, and like four meetings, special meetings. It's a frustrating process. I do have to say that Bruce and Kim, you guys have a thankless job. And this process has been very difficult. I do think that all of this is strengths on how important we're supposed to interact with people in the audience, that one of the things that we do need to do over the next six months, over the next year, is we make some of these decisions, is find a way to really engage the community in a much more substantial way, and incorporate their feedback in a much more...
I have attended every school board meeting that didn't conflict with the leadership board, which I am on for my church. So, I can't tell you exactly the number of those, but on a Thursday night, if I don't have to be on the leadership board at my church, I have been coming to school board meetings, and I've spoken a few times. I also hosted a, I don't know if you recall a time in our community when there were a lot of signs that said "Omega School"? I wasn't really a big fan of that, because I'm a big supporter of positive change and of saying what you are for instead of what you're against. So, I hosted, I put out an open Facebook invitation, I wasn't sure how much to cook for that, but I put out an open invitation for anyone who wanted to come and talk about how to make the message positive and to say how that we do want change in our community, because I believe that change in our community is imperative. The status quo is unacceptable. However, I don't believe that that change requires a large campus. I've also attended weekly meetings to discuss positive solutions with community members, and I invited people who are leaders in the field of disability services to share their knowledge with me. One of my takeaways from visiting different neighborhoods, which include some of the schools, are that there are a lot of people in our community who are not informed about the current issues on the table, and we need to be a lot more inclusive and communicate much better than we have been, so that their voices are heard.
I have been to every board meeting in the past six months, except for one, because I was volunteering with a local education organization. I've been at nearly every single board meeting in the last 24 months. I was at, I was a member of our steering committee, so I was present at every single one of those meetings, too. I've been in every single building, including the early DLC and Chancy. I've been, I toured them all to try to really take good, pay attention to what's happening in them. As we were looking through our building assessments, I've been into rooms you don't know exist, perhaps, in some buildings, they're very scary. I mean, you just keep going and going and going and going, and you have no idea where they're going to end up. My takeaway, though, is, and I've been in buildings across...
and I've been in buildings across the state. I've been across, and a lot of the buildings that architects have built as well, just trying to get a good grasp of those. But, you know, what I hear when I'm in those buildings is, are things like, our teachers want a voice. They want to know that they're supported. They want to know that their needs are really heard. And then, when you're in those classrooms, when you sit down with those teachers, and you see them educating in a way that we didn't really learn, like today I sat in the math room, and the way that those children were learning math are so different than most of us. And we have, I've learned that I have a lot of learning to do, and as a school board member, I want to keep being in the classrooms, because I think that's where everything happens, and that's where I'm going to learn. And I'm always welcome, I'm always glad to have the invitations to participate in those.
So, in answer to the question, I've been to five meetings, including a couple of the special meetings that we had in the last six months to talk about the facilities issues at hand. And I have visited all buildings except for, I've not been to Chancy. I will say that the one takeaway that really occurred to me was, it really reinforced my belief in small class sizes and the importance of those for learning outcomes. A lot of the new innovative teaching methods that some of the teachers are using, some of that was learned at the professional development that was held right before school started, which I thought was a really great success, and I heard nothing but great things from a lot of the teachers who attended. Those can't happen on a much larger scale in the large classrooms that we have. We really struggled with that last year. My daughter was in the class that was very large over at West due to consolidations. And I saw how that really impacted the teacher who, bless her, took on that giant class. But I think there's a lot more that we can do with allowing teachers to really stretch their wings and come up with some of those innovative ideas. And again, that can't happen with them being too overwhelmed and trying just to basically deal with the disciplinary things with the classroom, and not be allowed to teach.
Our next question is in category equity, and then we'll start with, oh, sorry, Kim Goldberg will start. So first, could you define equity? And then, given that there's a huge disparity in educational opportunities and outcomes between students correlated with their socioeconomic status, what do you think should be done to make schooling in ACSD more equitable? What concrete measures would you provide as support for teachers addressing learning?
Right now, with our school district, we have one school that has the majority of children that are on free and reduced lunch. And there's a high percentage of children that are also disabled in that school. And then, two miles away, we have a school that has only an eighteen percent free and reduced lunch. There's so few of students in that school that have free and reduced lunch, that they don't offer breakfast. So, the teachers that are in that building, that know that they have children that are hungry, bring snacks and food, or ask parents to do that, so that those children can have breakfast before they start learning for the day. We, our other buildings have a more balanced number of students on the free and reduced lunch. But that's not just all that it's about. It's about the equity and what the kids can receive. If I'm going to do my homework, and you're doing your homework, and you're doing your homework, and you're doing your homework, and everyone up here is doing their homework, the kids that maybe go home to unsupervised homes, they're going to be more likely to do their homework when all of their friends are doing their homework. They'll sit at the table by themselves and do it. But if the majority of the students are not going to go home and do their homework, then why would I need to do my homework? Because then I might look like the nerd, or I might get picked. So, having a better balance will help educational outcomes, as well as just providing more opportunities for all of our students, and everyone's going to become more enriched.
Okay, equity. It's for all of our students, all students. It's not for some over here and some over there. It's for all of the students. And that's, that's equity, okay? Other than that, I think that Kim pretty well, pretty well said the rest. And it's just a matter of getting these kids, all the kids together, mixing them up. They will all learn from each other, and that's what we need to do to get out. And then, so that they're not all coming together at middle school, it'll be more uncrucial. So, the equity part will be putting them together as a team, and let them go through the ways together. And the teachers, I can't say anything above that. Teachers know what they're doing. They know what to do. And I couldn't be more proud of our teachers.
So, the school district I grew up in is not as rural as it was when I was a kid. It's much more affluent now than it was when I was a kid, and I probably couldn't afford to live there now. But even now, it still has a forty percent free and reduced lunch rate, which has got to be a boost for parents. The difference in the districts that I grew up in is that we had three elementary schools, and none of them was in one area that was, that had a much higher rate of pop, right? So, everything was sort of equally distributed around. There wasn't any weird busing or odd lines. We just had a good basic usage of schools. And that did make a difference. I would say that we need to think about equity as inclusiveness, and that's not just socioeconomic status, although that's part of it. It's not just about buildings. It's about finding ways to provide the services that everybody needs. It's about making sure that the classroom environment that we have is really equitable across the district. If you think about those free and reduced lunch rates, we have seventy percent out in one school after the planes. We have eighteen percent at East. When those kids walk into first aid kindergarten, that means in one building, we've got four kids that are coming from a difficult environment at home in class at East. We've got fourteen kids coming from a place where they've got a difficult time at home at planes. And we've got to fix them.
To define equity, I would say it is when every learner has what that student needs to learn as much as possible. One of my favorite graphics, I wish we could have brought pictures here to share with you tonight. It's the picture you may have seen where there are three kids trying to look over the fence at a baseball game. And they are in one side of the graphic, they are shown, it's shown what happens when they each get the same-sized box. And nobody, one of the kids can see over the fence, but the other two can't. And equity is not that. Equity is not doing the same thing for every child. Equity is when each kid gets the size box they need to stand and watch the baseball game and look over the fence. So, to address the disparity, I would renovate the current buildings and redistrict. I know that redistricting is going to be uncomfortable. It is a challenging issue to bring up. I think that's why it's not talked about a lot. But I think that in an inclusive, very communicative process, where all of the stakeholders are considered, redistricting is the way to go. Because then, we will have small nurturing environments, which are some of, one of the best ways to support our kids that have a lower socioeconomic status and more struggles in their home experience. Concrete measures that I would make sure we provide, specifically, we need more wraparound services in our school buildings. We need laundry services, adult education, adolescent care, dental screenings, those kinds of things that will make it so that all of our kids have what they need, and our schools contribute to our community.
An equitable education is one that provides students with what they need to learn. And we're talking about the boxes. Equality is the box, and equity is different sized boxes. But the problem is not the box. The problem's the fence. The problem is, the fence is what is preventing our kids from attaining what they desire, what they need, what they have to be successful. It's not, the kids are starting in a different place. Yes, we can provide them a bigger box, but we need to tear down that fence. If our school district is at all responsible for a single plank in that wall, then we have a moral imperative to take that down. That is what is preventing our children from an equitable education. Not their height, but the fence. And we can do that. We have the power to do that in our district. That's going to require taking a real hard look about what we do. But it's the fence. And we live in a society where we're building walls, and we're talking about building walls, and we need to tear down that wall. We can't do it all in our school districts. We can't take down that entire fence. But we can take, we can do our part to take that down. Thank you.
So, as others have said, equity and equality are two different things. Equity is where each child is provided with what they need as an individual to live up to his or her own potential. Equality is where they're all provided the same thing, but it's not the same. We can put every child under one roof, but that makes no guarantee that they're going to get the individualized attention that they need to thrive. Studies show class sizes is even more important to those children in lower income families. Alimentary school consolidation may help in improving quality, but it won't necessarily result in equity. When Chancy was closed, a mistake was made in moving all of the children to automatic planes instead of redistricting. Then, to compound that, transfer busing was discontinued. So, those two had no transportation and could no longer choose their elementary school at the moment. In order to overcome the socioeconomic disparity between the schools, the best solution, then, is to redistrict to try to correct this, and to provide for better integration between schools. Transfer busing should also be reinstated, so that parents, once again, have the true choice for inter-district enrollment enrollment without relying on them potentially not having the transportation options to take their children to school. Over the years, these districts have been gerrymandered with special carve-outs for specific neighborhoods. If you really look at the arbitrary lines of the district map, there's a true opportunity to make significant headway in changing the makeup of the schools.
This is working now? Well, I would think of equity as kind of two aspects. I think that equity is the quality of opportunity, where everybody gets an equal chance to achieve their goals through whatever resource allocation we have available. And it's adjustable to each student. It doesn't have to be the same for everybody. We all know that different people need different things, but the opportunity is the same for everyone. I think another side of equity is the equality of risk. Exposure to risk should be equal to everybody. What I'm concerned about, because we've talked about a whole lot, is if we're concerned that about seventy-five percent of children are concentrated in one school, there's twenty-five percent in that school, their only risk factor is the factor in that school. That is equally difficult for me to say is a good thing to continue. So, I think that redistricting is an answer. I don't believe that you have to build a whole lot of new buildings to redistrict. I think that you can reorganize what we have now and deal with that issue. Now, I don't believe that redistricting or restructuring is going to solve the problems of the children who have so many risk factors in their lives. But it does take one out. It does reduce the concentration. And if we can do that, I think we're obligated to do that.
A quick reminder to the audience as well. If time allows, we will open to the audience to write in questions. You can take those to Anna back there in the corner. She has paper and pens as well. The next question is special education. What is your vision for special education? How do you achieve least restrictive environment while providing free and appropriate public education to students with special needs? Do you have examples from current practice or research?
We need to do, we need to do better with our special education. There's no doubt about that. We need rooms that can be special, for them. Because they just don't pay up the setup for that. We do have some spaces in some of our schools for that, but they're still not the best that they could be for the teachers who teach kids with special needs. Do we have any current practice or any research? All I know is that we do do better, and we will do better. Thank you.
I've been talking a lot with people in the past month or so, trying to learn more about how special education is to be a resource. Can't hear me?
No.
I've been trying to talk to people in our district about special education for the past month or so, really trying to understand how it is we're delivering it now and what we can do about it. And I've discovered two things. The first is that we get a very different answer depending on who we talk to. And the second is that overall, we're not doing nearly as much as we should. Part of the problem is that historically, we've been playing sort of a game of whack-a-mole with delivering special education in our district. So, we don't have all the resources and all the facilities. And part of that is because we simply can't afford to provide all of the service in all the buildings for term of term cap. So, that's part of the problem. The second is that the way that we populate our schools right now, we're moving them around. We're moving the resources around and where the kids are. So, we may have kids in two buildings that are supposed to get five hours a week of special services on their IEP, and instead, they get three or four, because we've got one person that specializes in what they need, has to move between the buildings. I'm not a specialist in this area, and to be honest, I don't think I'm going to be able to become a specialist in this area. As a board member, I would rely on those that are specialists to tell us what we need and make it a priority and funnel.
This is an area that I've done a lot of research on since I became interested in running for the school board, because I became very aware that it is a critical issue for our school district, and we are not doing as well as I could. I do have a vision for us. My vision is that we are a leader in southeast Ohio for educating students with disabilities. To do that, we do need to provide the least restrictive environment for those students as possible. To do that, we need additional aides and classroom support. We need to continue the development of sensory rooms in every single school. We need board certified behavior analysts. I believe that to have tested and trained teachers and behavior analysts who are skilled at working with students with disabilities, that will assist those students immeasurably. And then, finally, I want to tell you a little story about some students that I work with at the university. A common set of students who come to my office in the Allen Center at the university are those who are struggling for the first time in large classes. And sometimes, through conversations, through long conversations, finally, I ask, have you ever been tested for a learning disability? And there's a subset of students who respond, no. And I say, well, this is interesting to me. Tell me about your high school experience. Well, I went to a very small high school, they tell me. And I say, and what was it like when you took the test? Well, everyone else, you know, took the written test, and the teachers read me the test. They said I did better that way. So, essentially, they had accommodations that they didn't even know about, because they were in a small school. And it is our small schools that will support many of our students with disabilities.
If you've been following me on Facebook, I've been doing videos in about the past two months about issues on our district. And at 6:30 tonight, one launched on disability services and the ways that I would like to approve it in our district. No way, in ninety seconds, can we deal with the insurmountable, non-
non-things that we need to do. But the U.S. Individuals with Disabilities Act, which is an idea, it lays out what a least restrictive environment is, and that is to the maximum extent appropriate. Children with disabilities, children in public or private institutions, or other care facilities are educated with children who are not disabled. That is exactly what it is. We talk a lot about LRE, least restricted environment, but that is, that is the definition of what a least restricted environment is. In my video, we talk about a lot of things. I talk about our improvements for Orient-Gilligan training for children with reading challenges, with dyslexia, with board-certified behavior analysts, what they do, our need for sensory rooms, what sensory rooms are. I want to start a council for special education that can help guide the board as we're dealing with the issues in special education within our district. We need to provide all of our students with that, with that which they need to learn, and that includes special needs, children with special needs. And I am totally, totally committed to this, regardless of any configuration that our district goes with. I have a special needs nephew. This is very important to me. I've spent the last year with the Muslim steering committee, reaching out, talking to as many of the parents with the needs that they feel our district has and we have a lot to improve it to make.
So whether we have one large school or several smaller schools, the accommodations must be made to ensure that each child is given an individual chance to live up to his or her own potential. This is not only by government regulations, but also by the standards that we should want to adhere to as a district for all our children. We should do more to support our children with disabilities. However, buildings are only one piece of the puzzle as our personnel and fiscal concerns. As I have a daughter who is also an IEP, I am intimately familiar with this particular system. And I know that if you look at the staffing levels in our district, those working with special education is actually dropping in the last few years. So we need to do more to accommodate and provide individual instruction for the students with disabilities. We can build new facilities, but if we don't have the appropriate staffing or necessary programming that's geared towards helping these children with disabilities live up to his or her own potential, like early intervention, nothing's going to change. As we determine how we move forward with this facility's question, regardless of renovation or rebuilding, we will need to work with the district to understand the unmet needs and the parents and how we move forward, not just to meet, but exceed expectations.
My view of special education is dictated by the obligation we had to educate every kid. And so I think that obligation extends to all students. Now, the way that you do that is defined in the law through a very specific set of processes that identifies who qualifies for special education. That is implemented up in one in our school district as at every school district in the country, I believe. And then you're obligated to provide the least restrictive environment through that process. The process is cooperative, one with the parent and the administrator and the staff. And so that's how you do it. Now, whether we are doing it up to the degree that we should be doing it, that's open to discussion. I don't happen to know the answer to that question. But it's fairly simple to find out if we are. But it is, it is addressable through the processes that exist today and that you can follow this process. I don't believe we have any examples in our programs where people who are ignoring the law are trying to circumvent the law in terms of meeting the needs for special education population.
Every learner, every day. That's our motto at our schools. And that includes the children with disabilities. It includes all students, every single learner. Our district has realized that we are not providing the best education for some student populations, and we are making strides in that department. But we have a long way to go. We've invested thousands of dollars in Orient-Gilligan services this year, and those students are seeing amazing results. But while we are adding some sensory rooms and calm-down rooms, we need to have that in every single building. Every student, no matter what their address, should be able to go to the building that they are assigned to. We shouldn't have to shuttle our students on a bus. That's where we can do better. If we have less than four elementary buildings, we can provide more services. Our classroom sizes would actually be smaller than what they currently are and more balanced. And we would be able to provide a better, least restrictive environment for all of our students, especially those with special needs.
The number six question is referenced around gifted. What is your opinion on the best way to educate gifted children? And how do our current practices such as HOTS fit into this? Do you have examples from current practices or research? This question will start with David Peel.
So we have a daughter who went through the HOTS program. Let's take it soft. We have a daughter that went through the HOTS program. And I have to say that her experience was that it gave her a space to learn differently. There's a lot of downward pressure in the classroom on kids, especially in fifth and sixth grade, to not overachieve, to not stick their head up to it. And so for our child, it was an opportunity to not worry about everything else. That said, the HOTS program really, it works well with a very specific set of kids. A set of kids that I think are, in some ways, a special class in much the same way that people who have disabilities are a special class. They need, they need special attention in order to thrive, and that's fine. But we also, we also need to find ways to enrich our classrooms without doing tracking at the elementary level. I know that that's happening in some buildings now and not others. We need to find ways to educate our kids better in the classroom that we can differentiate between kids so that all of the kids in that grade can learn from one another, can leverage off one another, and they can learn at different paces. We have some work going on in the district right now, I think, to try and help transform the way that we're teaching math so that that's more student-driven and it's more accessible across a broader range and it's an easier for teachers to differentiate.
I do have an opinion of the HOTS program, and it has to do with something that we do at Ohio University. At Ohio University, we have a holistic file review. That means if you don't have the highest ACT score, you don't have a perfect GPA, we look at your whole experience. And we look to see if our education that we offer could serve you. I think it's problematic that only, the last I heard, one or two kids from the planes is in the HOTS program. I don't think that that's because the kids at the planes aren't just as bright as the kids at any other school. I think that's because we're using restrictive measurement tools that are inequitable from the start. So that's the first thing I want to say about that. The second thing I want to say about that is that if you have been reading recent literature on, for example, how to teach mathematics, we have a math circles program in this community that I'm intimately familiar with because of the work that my husband does. And he has shown me how to educate kids from many different levels in the same space. And I know that that's happening in the fourth grade at West right now. They are able to meet the needs of all of the levels of the kids in that room. That happened for one of our daughters. She came home one day and I said, "Who's your reading buddy? Your reading buddy's got assigned today, who's yours?" And she said, "Mr. Hal Jones said he would be my reading buddy." And when I later asked him about that, he said, "Well, she didn't have a peer reader in the class, so I assigned myself." That is what teachers do who can meet the needs of the gifted kids in their class.
So last year, excuse me, last year there were 49 kids in our HOTS program. Three of them were from the planes, and one was in sixth grade. The planes hold 29% of our kids in school districts and represent only 6% of that program. And there are a lot of reasons for this. I mean, we have to figure out, we have to kind of look into what's happening. Because some of our schools will test twice before entrance into the HOTS program. Some parents who are very active will request additional, request another test for their kids. And there's no fault for a parent wanting what is best for their children at all. When a child is, when your child said, "Oh, they're tested to the gifted," they get excited, and then they say, "Now what's next? Give my child all this stuff?" But not all children have parents that are that active. We need to make sure that our gifted program is equitable. And what we're just talking about here, you know, we need to be, to do our best to be inclusive as possible. I have friends in education who are very, very split on how to deliver education for special education, how the classrooms can be set up. I watched one of these classrooms today, teaching across all ability levels with students. But we need to make sure that all children who should be in our gifted programming or our HOTS programming or whatever it is, that they have the chance to be in that. And that needs to be across the board because we know that none of our kids are any less capable, regardless of where they live, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of who their parents are.
So along the same lines, you know, educating gifted children starts with identifying who these children are. And I too have been troubled in looking at the lack of coverage from throughout the district and ensuring that equity also applies to the gifted learners as well as those who need additional assistance. You know, those children may be excellent test takers or not-so-great test takers, but I think we need to take that into account and really look at some other evaluation methods to ensure that we are equally selecting those children who deserve to have the advanced education just as well as we look at them when they have issues and they need additional intervention. They also, I also want to say too that small class sizes, I think, can help a lot with the evaluation and identification of this. When you get into some larger class sizes, then the teachers don't know their children as intimately as they may in a larger environment.
I've always felt that it was a curiosity that for the special education children, we are constantly pushing to put them in a least restrictive environment as that is by definition the best place that they can learn with a heterogeneous group of children of their peers. Yet with the gifted population pushing the other way for trying to create a different, more restrictive environment, it's always been curious to me. And I'm not saying it doesn't work. I'm not saying it's not necessary. But it always seems to me we mix and match things to our own desires rather than try and be consistent with how we need children. My own personal opinion is, is that the best way to serve the gifted children is with enrichment programs in the regular class for that very reason. I think they're better off with their peers and being working in those peers. And if they are beyond the curriculum or the particular discussion or the reading level, then they need a class enrichment. I believe that our teachers do a pretty good job with that. Now, are there exceptions? Yes. If the HOTS program is addressing a very specific class of exceptional children, then certainly it's serving a purpose. But my concern is, there's always a push, decrease that number, and on the other end, decrease that number.
Currently, our HOTS program is not equitable. It's not inclusive. We kind of, just like Dr. Girkus said, we're doing the opposite that we're doing with our special needs children. It's not equal across the district. The kids that are in the HOTS program travel on a bus to a different location when they could be getting that enrichment within their classrooms. We have, our teachers do a very good job of adding enrichment to those children that need additional push or need additional information. Our teachers know which ones finish their paperwork in five minutes and which one it takes 25 minutes to give. And they can provide those students with extra books. It's nice that we have a HOTS program, but I feel like our HOTS program could be improved. And I feel like we could get some ideas from outside of the district, maybe what's working well in some of the other districts, maybe with some after-school enrichment or before-school enrichment activities. Hilliard Schools is doing an amazing Power Hour project that's 30 minutes before school, and it's grant funding. And we should consider looking at other options to help enrich all of our students' lives.
I have nothing to add. And there were a lot of good things said. We do need, we do need to better ourselves in this, in this area. There's no doubt about it. But it's all been said, and my goal is to keep everybody's time.
Okay, we've received a lot of questions from the audience. So we're going to go ahead and take this question. We're sending our last question that we have prepared so we can read through some of the questions from the audience as well. And so this is a rather large question. As you see, you've got a valerie in front of you. I will read it for you as well. This question is regarding finances. The Athens City School District not only has a significantly higher property tax rate and higher property values than other areas or districts, but what is the only, I'm sorry, but it is the only to collect an income tax as well. Despite this, we are not the top-rated district in the area. For example, Alexandria receives a better state report card than Athens City School District. Do you feel that our district should consult with others on how to better results can be achieved while increasing financial responsibility? And do you support additional tax levies? And Jenny will get to start this question. The final, your closing.
Okay, so let me say I've never voted against a levy. So I do support our community district. However, I understand that finances are restricted, especially for people on fixed incomes, and I want to be very careful and respectful of that. I think that, yes, our district should consult with others on how better results can be achieved. There are, in fact, peer cities to the city of Athens. See the mayor nodding his head. And I think that we should consult with those cities to see what kinds of things they're doing to make sure that they have excellent school systems surrounding a largely university community in terms of employment. And finally, you know, reuse before recycle. I don't understand why we have, in a dire time of fiscal crisis, why we are talking about building brand-new buildings. That doesn't, that's a nonsect work to me. It's not how I run my house. I still have the chairs in my dining room that were in my parents' house. And what did I do? I recovered them, I fixed them up, they are just fine. I know that our buildings have a lot of issues, but I want to fix those issues, renovate our buildings, redistrict so that we have equity, and resolve the financial and be fiscally responsible as a result of that.
I mean, we certainly should be learning from everybody that we can all the time. I mean, that's education, right? We have a problem, we need to solve it. We need to piece together a lot of really complex, complex issues here. As far as adding additional tax levies, we need to be sure that if we do put a levy on the ballot, that it's actually going to, we can demonstrate how it's going to improve education in our district. We need to make sure that that's always first and foremost. I mean, we're funded 40% by our property tax renewal. Our mileage is currently at the midpoint of the Ohio law. And we look at our five-year forecast. Our two-year forecast is going to be a lot more accurate. We had a surplus this year, which is great, but we had a ton of things break our way. We had, you know, a one-year increase in our public utility property tax revenue, which is three times anything that's ever been reported. That's going to go down. Some property values increased last spring. That's not going to keep up. And 12% of our budget is by our income tax levy. And I think that... And I think that, you know, this 12% of our budget is fairly significant. But we're looking at declining enrollment, we're looking at 13% less kids in our district from 1999. In the last 25 years, we have 33% less children that live in Athens City Schools. And we will be looking at a very potential deficit. And so we need to see if we can sustain that. And if we, if we're people, we have to ask people in the community, if we're going to support a major tax crease to maintain the status quo, that we're not happy with our outcomes. So we need to look at our organization, we need to improve our services, and we need to look outside of our district to find as many solutions as we can to the issue of funding our district.
So first, to address the first part of the question, I do think that the state is really grappling with the best way to measure success in school systems. So not to say that there is definitely room for improvement in the Athens City School District, but I also am not convinced that via the school report cards or the state tests are the ultimate method of measuring that. In fact, if you look, there was a recent Dispatch article that talked about low-income school districts and how they tend to perform poorly on state tests across the state, and so it's not just Athens. We are performing better on ACT scores, and I think ultimately that's going to be a better indicator of student achievement, especially after 2019, when the Ohio graduation test could be replaced by the ACT as one of the options for graduation. That being said, we can always do better, and we should absolutely look towards peer institutions, other districts, to find out best practices that we can use for that. Regarding the levies, you know, certainly Athens has always been very supportive of levies. As a community, we definitely support our schools. I'm a little concerned about the new levy that's being about this fall, honestly. I've never not supported a levy, but really voting on levies is a way for communities to keep their school boards accountable. And this current levy is a five-year issuance, or is a 10-year issuance instead of a five. And so I think, you know, getting rid of that accountability may be not such a good thing. So it's something that we definitely need to take into consideration.
I too would take issue with the characterization that the state report card is the way you evaluate your school district. I think the state itself is struggling with that. If you paid attention, the state legislatures are already questioning, which I knew was going to happen as soon as the suburban school districts started to feel the pinch. The powerful school districts, when they are pinched, things change. If it's just us people down here, Southeastern Ohio and the inner cities, they don't seem to care too much what your report card says. I've always said the report card is an unfair evaluation, it's, it's a poor way to do things. I'd rather we look at our open enrollment stats. We have a lot of people in this county who evaluate where they want to send their kids to school, and we still overwhelmingly get more kids in than we get out. That tells you something, I think. I'd rather look at our national merit finance. We have dozens of national merit finance. We do a wonderful job, I think, and I think that's, that's directly attributable to the people that we have in the district and their willingness to support the students at the level we've asked them to do. Again, we never fail the levy. I would hate to fail a levy and start a new inertia, a new momentum. So that's why I think we ought to take a very close look at a proposal we put on the ballot for facilities.
Sixteen of 24 measures of our state report card last year showed, I think, more than a five-point gain. But yet, our report card didn't look that great. Across the whole state, the report cards didn't look that great. So like the others have said, judging based off of the report card alone is not the way to judge in the district. Our district spends almost $12,000 per student a year. With that money, we're offering art and music, theater. We're offering classes that the districts around us are not offering. We have 10 AP classes at the high school. We do not charge students to play in a sport. And we provide buses for every student in our district. Those things are also important. And this is where the tax support comes in. The levy that's on the ballot this fall is a renewal of our everyday expenses. It's not for buildings, it's for everything we do. Partially, why we're adding it to a 10-year levy versus a five-year levy is because it costs the district thousands of dollars to put a ballot, a levy on the ballot each and every time. Without that 12% of our budget, we cannot operate the way we do now. We need the support of our taxpayers. You, the taxpayers, are helping make our district successful.
When we moved here in 73, the state and feds were giving 60%, and then the local people had to make up about 40% of the taxes. Today is absolutely flip-flopped. They only gave us 35% or 40%, and we're taking up the rest of it. So they, they put the burden on the weaker districts to, to do whatever they need to do to make their schools work. I can tell you that our treasurer does check with other school districts that are peer size to us. He does an excellent job of keeping the numbers going. Why are property values higher than Athens? Huh, could it be that big university down the street? I think so. So there's, there's a lot of issues that, that make things, you know, taxes are going to be higher. But I can tell you for the levies, the levy is coming up, and I hope that everybody votes on the levy that's coming up. It is very important. It is, it can make a huge difference. This levy that I know that you're talking about here was the renewal. The renewal is the same numbers, and it's for the same reason, it costs a lot of money to put it on. So anyway.
Well, so I think there's a few things we have to consider. The first is that the funding model, in terms of state funding, is different for almost every, every district in the state, right? You're used to telling me if I'm wrong, but it is. And, and so if you look at our neighboring districts, if you look at FedHOC, if you look at Alexandria, the portion of funding that they get that comes from the state is significantly higher, right? So we have higher property values. And yes, we pay income tax, but we get significantly less money from the state. So that's the first place to start. The other thing that we have to consider, we've been talking all night about, about equity and different populations and different needs. And if you look around at the districts around us, they have very different student bodies than we do. So think about our district. So we have some of the highest poverty in the state. And simultaneously, probably have the highest number of PhDs per capita in this area, right? We talked about the gifted program a few minutes ago, we've talked about equity, we've talked about special services. We're paying for all those boxes, and I think we have to pay for all those boxes. But we need to understand that the state is paying us less than they're paying the districts around us. The state report card is flawed, and we could spend an entire night talking about the state report card. In their infinite wisdom, the legislators thought that, that we would all understand things better if we saw a simple letter grade. If you sit down and actually dig into those numbers, they really don't make much sense. A lot of those scores are bifurcated. We've got a chunk of people on the bottom, a chunk of people on the top, and the letter grades don't tell you the standard deviation. We could obviously be doing a lot, doing a lot better than we are, and I think that we can, but the funding's not going to get better.
Okay, as we mentioned before this question began, we do have a series of questions from the audience, and so we've decided to go ahead and we have three questions from the audience. We do have additional questions, and as we mentioned, whatever questions that seem to be located or found in this forum, we will carry over into the forum for going on November 2nd as well. So the questions will not be lost over time, they will be continued on at the next forum. We just don't have the time this evening. And so this is a question from the audience. Do you believe in school board members communicating directly with teachers? How would you invite teacher input to inform your decisions as a school board member? And we're going to go ahead and go with Sean.
Oh, that's a heck of a question. People love just a timer.
I mean, since you don't have it written, I'll be more than happy to repeat your question second time. It says, "Do you believe in school board members communicating directly with teachers? How would you invite teacher input to inform your decisions as a school board member?" If you need to repeat it, I will.
This is a good question. We have to, we have to respect a number of bodies. One, we have to expect, respect that teachers do want to have that voice heard. And, but we need to do, make sure that we do that in, in a way that, that's constructive. And I will always be open to hearing from teachers. I want to hear from teachers. I want to know what they're doing in their classrooms. I'd like to know their needs, I'd like to know what their passions are, what their dreams are for their children. You know, I, I want to know that, I want to know them, what their challenges are. But I also have to respect the fact that they are represented by a teachers' union. And that when it comes to working with the teachers' union, that need to be mindful of that relationship, not to circumvent the union when it's not appropriate to do so. I grew up in a teacher household. My, my parents were part of a teachers' union. I remember how powerful that was. But we have to, you know, I, I, this one I really struggle with because I know that some teachers don't feel that they're, that they're representing teachers. I'd love to be in the classrooms. I want to, I'd like to see what's going on there. I want to continue doing that because that's where we really, really, really learn what's happening. So yeah, and I don't know if I'm really getting at the whole part of the question, but I will respect the teachers' union and that body, and I will respect the teachers' voices as well.
So if you look at the budget for the school district, instruction is certainly one of the top expenditures. And of course it is, because that's really what we do, right? We teach children. We learn, we are educators. And so teachers are on the front lines. They're the ones who see on an everyday basis the issues, the ideas, the innovations that we can have in moving our district forward. So I think it's critical that we give input and communicate directly, ongoing direct communication with the teachers. As I mentioned before, I feel like we really skipped the whole strategic planning process of this and went straight to buildings. You know, personnel instructions are a huge part, instructors are a huge part of that. We really need to listen to what they have to say on how we can do things like, you know, get better test scores, instruct our children better, and have further interventions with those in special populations. And so I, I would have an open-door policy and a communication with all members of the district, all populations, and especially with teachers. I mean, I think it's important to recognize the bargaining unit, but I also think that, you know, everyone should have a voice when it comes to this.
I'm glad I didn't go first this time because I hadn't thought about the issue of the teachers' union. I think that makes a two-part problem. I think that individually, teachers are the same as anybody else in the district. They have the right to talk, and I wouldn't put limitation on that. And that would be our communication. As far as getting group input, I think that's problematic because I think there are issues about teacher bargaining unit issues and issues about you circumventing your own administrative staff. So I think that might be problematic. But I think that you do keep an open door policy as far as you move with teachers, even small groups of teachers. But I don't think you can be eliciting responses or input as groups because I think that skirts some big organizational problems or skirts amounts of organizational concerns, I should say.
I think I have a very good relationship with the majority of the teachers in the district. We'll go for walks, we'll have coffee, we'll just chat. They are, if I don't have a communication line with them, how do I know what's working and what's not working? You know, maybe somewhere where we can plug in a little idea. So I think it's very important to have an open line of communication with the teachers. But at the same time, you also have to respect the union and respect the, their privacy at the same time. Typically, if I have questions, I have a handful of teachers I send an email to or call and get some feedback with, and they'll call me sometimes and need to tell me about a situation or something. And it's been a very positive ebb and flow environment. We can't help the teachers if we don't know what's happening, which is where it's nice to be able to have that constant open communication.
I have had teachers in the past come, ask questions, talk, had nice conversations. And that's it, just, that's the same, is to find out what their issues are that we can help them with. And I'm very appreciative of the union. We look to bargaining, we gave this pass the year and half, I guess, I don't know where. I, I think that the board and the union have, have a good relationship, and I want to keep that a good relationship. I don't want it to become an us and a them. We have to work together to get the education for our kids.
I think there's a balance that we have here in that, that the board really can't do its job. Individual board members can't really understand what's happening in schools, you know, talking to teachers. But we do need to have some kind of balance so that the board members are not intervening in the day-to-day operations of schools. So we have three real responsibilities, branch responsibilities as board members, right? Three very basic responsibilities. So it's to, it's to fund the schools, to set policy, right? And hire, I'm kidding, and hire administrators, no, and hire administrators who then hire the teachers. So I wouldn't want to be in a position where I am intervening in the way the school is operating, intervening between a teacher and the school. And I think that that's the best. I also wouldn't want to be in a position where I am intervening in the way that we are negotiating with the teachers. But absolutely, I think that I would want to continue talking to teachers as I do now. And here, we're going to have to say, so that we're the best and we'll provide the policy.
Similarly, I believe that we should have individual conversations with teachers and not get in the way of the bargaining unit. But I will go a step further than that and say that transparent and inclusive communication and leadership requires that we are in touch with all of our stakeholders. And so I do think that we need to seek out more information from teachers. They have so much knowledge and wisdom about things that work and things that don't. They have so many creative solutions to difficult problems that I think we should, and perhaps not by, you know, meeting in a group setting that would be in conflict with union specification, but by more surveys or open invitations to leave comments, those kinds of things. Without the guidance and the steering of the teachers, we will not be successful as a district. And, and just as I believe that caregivers are an important piece of the school board, I believe that teachers are an important voice as well for school board members to listen to.
The next question is, "How will the redistricting solve the issues related to SES when intra-district open enrollment is allowed by state law?" "How will redistricting solve the issues related to SES when intra-district open enrollment is allowed by state law?" SES as in socioeconomic status.
So as I've said before, I am definitely a proponent of redistricting as one of the frontline solutions to helping out with the SES inequity situation that we are currently experiencing. I know that open enrollment definitely has an impact on that, but I think what you're seeing seeing now with open enrollment within the district is a lot of that is actually happening because people are choosing to be in schools who are more convenient to their house than actually their homeschoolers. So an example of this is some people, there are several people who are, should be at West Elementary, and their families are actually within a stair of walking distance to East, and instead they're open enrolling East because it's more convenient. So if you take a look again at the lines of the district, they're very arbitrary. There is a finger here, they're jerry-bander, is really what they are. And you go through and you distribute that according to the way it should be distributed by household, and we're not talking about, you know, busing kids across town. A lot of this is, it just, it's really very logical and should have been done probably a long time ago. I think that alone is going to discourage some of the intra-district open enrollment. The other part of that is too, you are going to have kids who just are better fit at different schools, and that's okay. I mean, that's the reason why you have that intra-district open enrollment. But I don't think we're going to see nearly the amount of it once we redistrict.
Repeat the question.
"How will redistricting solve the issues related to socioeconomic status when intra-district open enrollment is allowed by state law?"
Well, I don't have a lot to add, it's already been said, except I think the district doesn't lose complete control over the intra-district transfer operation in that it still has the obligation to set class sizes and hire teachers and get the sections that they have in the elementary school. So as an example, if you have hired or you have structured your second grade has a particular ability to have three teachers, then you're not obligated to put 120 kids in those three teachers because you have that many intra-district transfer requests. You still can set your class sizes and the number of teachers within your own priorities in terms of the building, how much building we'll hold and what the issues are that you need to tend to in terms of how you structure a particular building. So I don't think the district gives up control and process. So I think it could be resolved to a large extent if we redistrict.
If we had, we do need to redistrict. We've needed to redistrict for years. I feel like that will help with our issues, but that does not solve our issues. If we redistrict the way we are right now, the planes would have, we would need to add probably five, six classrooms to the planes because we'd have too many students for that particular building. So we have to look at everything in a big picture. It's not quite so easy of just looking at it. If it were easy, we wouldn't have had a year and a half discussion about what to do with our facilities. We've been trying to manage open enrollment, better manage open enrollment. We've put caps on our class sizes. You know, if we manage our open enrollment better, then we don't have the issue like we did two years ago where we had 42 children enrolled in the kindergarten classroom and then nine came in the first day of school, where we're two days into school and we're having to hire a teacher. So we've learned with the open enrollment that we need to put the caps on the classrooms so that we can have some expansion with the process.
I think the only thing I can add to all that is, I think it's a combination of redistricting and facilities.
Well, I would agree. The thing is that redistricting would fix things for a few years, right? And that's about it. And that's what we're going to end up having to do if we're not able to pass a levy for new facilities. We could redraw boundaries tomorrow. We've all done it on the back of the cocktail, haven't we, right? Sat down and talked about where we could move kids from here to there and populate all the buildings and shuffle everybody around, but it wouldn't be a permanent fix because then everyone's going to move. And I don't think we want to redistrict every five years. I don't think we want kids to start school and halfway through everybody's school career telling them they're going to move building. I think we are going to have to do some redistricting because I do think that whatever solution we come up with with the facilities is going to be a combination of those two things, right? We're not going to be doing a single campus. So there's some chunk of, of the district that is going to be divided up based on attendance. But hopefully that's a smaller chunk, and hopefully it's divided in such a way that we get an equal mix without having a constant moving boundary.
I looked it up to see what the state law actually said. The state law is that we have a policy for intra-district enrolling, not what that policy is. And we need to do a better job of redistricting and then creating an intra-district, intra-district, you wouldn't believe how hard that is to say, policy that meets the goals of our district. Redistricting isn't a permanent solution. It is never a permanent fix. Neighborhoods, whole neighborhoods pop up. Some family neighborhoods, like mine used to be, are, you know, becoming rental neighborhoods. Things change, and we need to adapt to that change. We also need to fix some errors of the past. That when Chansey closed, which was definitely something that should have been examined and perhaps done differently, that population should never have been uniformly assigned to the planes. That in itself created a lot of the inequity that we are facing today and that students struggle with today. So redistricting will solve a lot of our problems temporarily, like all problems are solved, until the next time we have to do it.
I spoke at a school board meeting several months ago about ways we can better populate our schools along the lines of socioeconomic statuses. And redistricting is one tool that has been used. In fact, you know, there's also changing, forcing busing, changing bussings. There's been, there's just many, many different ideas, ways to do this. Half of our kids that go to our schools live north of Athens. And I think that sometimes we forget that. Forty-nine percent of West population does not live in West residential zone. And 21% of the schools populated by kids from outside of Athens City School District. You know, families don't always have the mobility to choose which school their kids go to. Sometimes they can't drive their children to school, single parent can't bring them across town. We can set a policy for socioeconomic balances, setting a percentage. Sixty-forty seems to be the goal. Dr. Gibbs says he believes that we can do it at fifty-fifty. But as a school board member, I need to see the complete picture. I need to see how that's going to impact families. I need to see how that's going to work. There's a lot of information that we're going to have to look at instead of just saying, yeah, well, just redistrict. This is a very complicated process, and we're going to, it's going to take a lot of patience and a lot of time and a lot of looking into the actual impact on the district, the impact on families. And, but I definitely think it can be on the table and it should be on the table as one part of a very complex solution for a very complex problem.
This will be the final question of the evening, and then you may move into your own closing statements. This message is first for Dr. Gitter. The question is, "Have all of you have made mention about small class sizes. At the high school, we have lost staff positions and counselors resulting in larger classroom sizes everywhere. How can that be rectified?"
Lost classes and class size numbers at the high school, is that, that's the premise?
The question is, "All of you have mentioned about small class sizes. At the high school, we have lost staff positions and counselors resulting in larger class sizes everywhere. How can that be rectified?"
Well, without knowing the particulars of the high school, it comes down to money. You have to have the biggest vocal in your budget in any school district is staff. So if you're going to have smaller class sizes, you need more staff. So it comes back to the levy that we were just talking about. That's 12% of your budget. You're not going to fix anything if you can't pass 12% of your budget. So I think that it's rectified to looking at what the needs are at the high school. And I'm sure the high school's not the only building that has needs. So they have to be equitably looked at in terms of balancing the high school's needs with the middle school, with the elementaries. All those questions have to be on the table at the same time. So the solution to me is a financial solution. You have enough money to satisfy those needs, that's what you do. If you don't, something has to go.
This is such a tricky question. Our high school has an influx of students on a daily basis that lead to go to college credit plus. And so it's very hard for a school board member to know exactly what's happening in the classrooms. And until we are, until we see those numbers, we've asked for the numbers. And we see that there are English classes that have 29 students or 30 students in it, but then you see a Spanish honors class that has six students in it, and, or a French honors class, I'm not sure, I'm just pulling things out of my head. But the influx is very difficult to manage, and we need to provide a better structure for managing that. And we need to also encourage our children to stay in the high school versus go to college credit plus for everything. We have so many fam, our teachers at the high school are amazing, and they can offer a class that's better and stronger than those at the college level. And we need to continue to rebuild, to bring more teachers into the high school to help balance out that, to balance out classroom sizes.
There's a lot of issues to solve that, and we don't. We don't know because we don't get all the information. Because it's dumb, that's why we, you know, we hire a superintendent, and he's a good superintendent, and he's running the ship, okay? And he does a good job. If there are issues that need to be brought up, that need to be addressed to the board, he brings them to us. It is not the board's job to run the school. It is to work with superintendent to make that school work. So there are lots of issues. There's a lot of issues with all of those questions that need to be addressed. Some need to be worked on more than others. But it comes down to, as Dr. Grubbs said, it is funding. And we need, we need our taxpayers to support our schools because our state and federal legislatures are not.
Let me repeat that question one more time.
Sure. "All of you have said something in regards to small class sizes. At the high school, we have lost staff positions and counselors resulting in larger class sizes everywhere. How can that be rectified?"
Well, so as everybody else pointed out, part of that question is value. What are we going to do to maintain staff or increase staff to accomplish that? I mean, we do have, we do have two problems. So the first is that, I'm going to get this number wrong because I don't have the budget in front of me, but something close to 80% of our budget is, is Sowers and Athens, right? So when we need to cut something, that's what makes it difficult, so we don't want to cut people. College Credit Plus is a double-edged sword for our district, for our students. It provides great opportunities for them to do things that we never offered in our school. And the original intent behind it was for students to be able to get ahead, to get a jump start in college and save money down the road. But by the same token, between that and our declining enrollment and the fact that we have to pay for College Credit Plus, right? We're going to have to make hard choices. So among the things that we need to do is we can look at, and I think we're already doing this at some level, look and bring, like, bring highly qualified teachers into the classroom that qualify to teach College Credit Plus classes in our school so the kids are in an age-appropriate environment, right? So that's part of the puzzle. And then I think we also need to really look strategically at what kinds of programs we want to offer long-term. And we can't keep everything, and there's areas where we need to expand. And those are all hard choices, and they need to be part of the long-term planning process that looks out where we want to be as a district five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road.
I'm really glad this question was asked because this is something I know a lot about. I, one of my roles at Ohio University is to advise College Credit Plus students and to manage the advising of College Credit Plus students who are not specifically my advisees. So I want to say that College Credit Plus pulls more than 90 students out of the high school. It costs the high school thousands of dollars. And what the high school needs to do, and I've spoken about this at school board meetings in the past, the high school needs to be competitive with the universities, the local universities, because it's not just OU, it's Hocking College, it's online universities that are offering certain classes across the state. And the high school can do it. I know the high school can do it because look what the high school has. They have more time on task. So if you go to OU and you learn pretty calculus, you're only taught four times a week, but here in the high school, you're taught five times a week. And if you want to see a big class, look at OU. You get less personal attention at Ohio University than you do right here at the high school. The high school can be competitive with College Credit Plus, not to mention the fact that the high school offers a lower-risk environment in which to learn these really complicated subjects. It's really important that we work on this and resolve this issue because if we don't do that, we're spending hundreds and thousands of dollars away to other people who can't do as good of a job as we can do for our community and for our kids to keep them where they belong developmentally, which is in the high school. I do believe that some kids need College Credit Plus, some College Credit Plus, but not as many in not exterior of the high school.
It seems like the conversation's kind of shifted to, to classroom sizes, to CT+ and we need to talk about that anyway. I mean, that's certainly an issue. You know, we have different class size goals for different age levels of children. You know, kindergarten classrooms have, you know, we have different requirements and different staffing needs for them, things that are most, that are going to best benefit those children. We spend about $200,000 a year as a district on this College Credit Plus program, and that also will pay for the children that don't live within our district. It's like 200 credit dollars, $200 credit dollars, I see? Right? No, okay, I rounded it up. That's sorry, I'm just, but, was that, oh, and, and textbooks, right? So that's what rounds it up, I think. But anyway, you know, I, I think that it's important that we look, we have this opportunity. Our district is at this place now where we have some very challenging decisions to make that are going to set the future for our entire district, that are going to be setting for generations to come. And I think what I would like to do as a school board member is to, to really encourage and to give the space for teachers and our staff and our curriculum, people that are working with our curriculum, to look at, like, what is a 21st century, century education? Are we most, not only most effectively delivering that, but are we doing it in the right way? And, you know, our, I think at the high school, you know, we're trying to support a curriculum that's not only developmentally appropriate to high school, but we want to consider kids using this, as we're talking about. But at every grade level, we can have a rich curriculum and, and ideas we can partner with our community and provide these. So, and my time is up. So, hooray. I just didn't want to repeat everything because there was some good stuff. So I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Laurie, you're next.
So in answer to the question, I think that class sizes boil down to a commitment from the community to make small class sizes a priority. As I have mentioned before, I think we, as a district, we really need to go through a strategic planning process and be proactive with deciding what are our values as a district? Are small class sizes important for and to us for educational outcomes? If that's the case, how do we get there? You know, I think that because we've started backwards, we didn't engage the community, the schools, the staff members in sort of this transparent dialogue, which, which is saying, what educational outcome, what does it impact that most? So I think, you know, for me personally, all the research points to small class sizes. What that means to a high school class size, what that means to an elementary class sizes are two very different things. I also think, and chiming in about College Credit Plus, I worked at Hocking College for five years. I saw the advent of this and what it did to that institution and the influx of students they're getting from that. It works conversely with the high school. It works conversely with the high school and it's not going away. So we need to figure out how we are going to bring that back into the fold of the high school rather than putting all the money elsewhere when it could be contained there.
Well, that concludes our questioning, our questions for the night. As we talked before, each candidate will be given two, two minutes for a closing statement. And we will start with David Hayden.
You know, ahead of the forum, all seven of us got email that included that first question, that so-called elephant in the room question about the way forward for our facilities. And I know that many people came here tonight to figure out where we stood and trying to get us to find a flag or one position or another. And I get that what we do with our buildings, particularly our elementary schools, has the potential to fundamentally change what our district is going to look like in the next 15 years. And I'll tell you, I've been watching this issue closely and I think pretty much everybody at this table has been watching this issue very closely for the past year and a half. And I still can't tell you with your answer what I think we should do. But in addition to that issue, our board's going to be making a lot of other decisions over the next four years. Some of them are going to be big, like facilities, but others are going to be these little daily decisions that they've had and seen less significant. But for every decision, big or small, board members need to work with professionals to understand the best practices and research that will tell us how to achieve the best outcomes and seek out voices and community to understand their vision and priorities to pull that information together and to make the best decisions they can for our schools, whether or not aligned with their own personal perspectives or preference. I think everyone on this stage has the best interest of our schools and our children at heart. And all I can say is that when I walk in the voting booth, I'll be checking the boxes for the three that might feel best of body to act as and the three that I think are best equipped to make all those decisions. I'd like to thank the district PTOs and the Penn College of Education for hosting and my colleagues for the passion for our schools and commitment to public service and thank all of you for submitting your questions and listening tonight by doing both showing your support for our schools.
If we're elected, I will make this promise and that is this, to continue to do my best, work with other board members, superintendent, treasurer, the staff and the community to give our kids the best education that we can and the resources that we have. I am confident that the Athens community will agree with me that we have an opportunity to give our kids a better education, our teachers and tools they need to use that education and to make Athens to the schools second to none in Ohio. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for hosting. It's been enjoyable. I've enjoyed getting to hear learn perspective from my other fellow candidates. I feel like it's, it's been very nice. Anyway, every learner, every day is our motto. I believe in this. This is how I've faced my decisions the last four years. Being on the school board, it's not as, it's not an easy job. I thought it could have more impact than what it can. It's kind of like driving a ship. It takes a long time to turn. A school district's a big, a big ship, but we're turning and we're seeing some positive things. We have the right people in our buildings, the staff members, the teachers, the janitors, they all care. Our kids love our schools. They don't see the inequities. They don't see that maybe they don't have something that another building has. So I want to thank our teachers and our staff members for providing the education that we do provide. We can do better as a board. We definitely can. We can do better for our children with disabilities. We can do better for our children of different socioeconomic balances. We can do better for the children that have English as their second language. We could do better for all of our children, but we are and we're dedicated to each and every student. Every learner, every day, that's how I will continue to make decisions, not based off of my kids or my friends' kids or my neighbors' kids. It's based off of every child in this district.
I do like to thank the PTOs for putting this on. It's been a good experience for me. One of the things I take away from this is I think this demonstrates why we are one of the best districts in Southeast Ohio, because this candidate pool is pretty good. Everybody can speak, everybody has a logical thought process, everybody, I fall asleep once in a while, but I didn't tonight. But I think that you have a wonderful choice here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about what my views are. I think I have something to offer, but that's we all decide and I would appreciate you both. Oh, by the way, I didn't mention, I'm, I'm also invested in the school district right now. It's not all past history. I have a grandchild west and another grandchild east. One of them is inter-district transfer. Thank you.
I also thank the PTO for hosting us today for the forum. I wanted to talk about a little bit in the Sam Quinone's book, Dreamland. He talks a little bit about hollowing out of our communities as one of the reasons the region was ripe for the ill-bait epidemic we're seeing now. That's kind of what we're talking about doing and it's talking about taking schools out of the heart of the communities and building big facilities or shuffling our children around from building to building. We depend on the schools not just for our education, but also as a place for the health and well-being of our children as monitored by compassionate teachers and administrators. I think we need to decide if we are, as a community, are going to support a box education or we're going to be a community who supports individualized education where every child matters. Bringing all children together in large schools, whether in grade bands or full consolidation, does nothing to improve socioeconomic equity. What has proven to impact this is small class sizes where teachers are provided the resources they need to help the children succeed. We can better achieve the diversity we seek more effectively and more cost-efficiently by renovating, redistricting and reinstating transfers. Athens historically has supported the schools and we don't want to go down the road of other districts who have consolidated, like Alexander, whose residents have lost the connection to their schools and therefore stopped paying for them. Once a levy is denied, a downward trajectory begins. Our board of education needs to be better than that. We need to be better listeners, regain community trust and make decisions that can be supported by the majority for the future of all of our children. I make a commitment to you that if I voted into the board, I will do just that.
It's a new microphone. We've been here for like two and a half hours and this is like, what is happening? Do you want to use this one too? Okay, it's awesome because we all touched it, so. No, it's not. You just gave somebody, it's trying to get me sick. That's what it is. My son called, like the school called today and they're like, your son's broken out. And we get there, he's got welts on his face. He'd go home and he got better and then right when we left, it's like grandma's calling like, yeah, he's having problems. Well, I touched this after you, so you're cool. It's going to be all right. I'll keep it short here. There's a lot of things that we have talked about tonight that are really important, that we have to work with in our district. But I really do believe that every child can learn and I think it's our responsibility to provide the children that which they need to learn and to succeed. What is it that our kids need to go out and change the world, make this world a better place? You know, what is it that our teachers need to enable that? And that question for me is essential as a school board member to how can I, as a school board member, support those things? I don't have all the answers, but who I am, I'm hardworking, I'm dedicated, I'm a big believer in public school education. I will talk to anybody that will talk to me about school board. I will reach out to people that see the world and see solutions differently than me. I want to challenge my own assumptions just as we want to challenge our children's. I really believe in public school education, believe it is essential to us moving forward for civility and civility and for building bridges in our communities. And I'm committed to that here in our Athens City School District. And so I just want to finish by saying I was blessed with the opportunity to share some of these ideas. I apologize when I dog, you drive your dogs crazy when I knock on the doors of your house. I'm doing that because I'm really, I'm really pushing hard to help be a part of the solution here, the future for Athens City Schools, to empower our teachers and help our children go out and change the world. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the thanks to the PTOs and to have the audience members here so patiently listening to us tonight. And I want to tell you a story that I've just collected along the way as I thought about my run for school board. I was picking up my daughter one day from kindergarten and I saw Mr. Gonzi pull a little girl over to the sidewalk and say, you know, your shoes aren't tied. Then he knelt down beside her and he tied both of her shoes and he talked about why it was important to make the knots really tight so that her shoes stayed tied and she didn't trip down the stairs. I thought about the kind of community that builds a nurturing environment like that, where Mr. Gonzi knew that student's name, where he identified the problem. He didn't, he wasn't just bowled over by hundreds of children walking in front of him, but he recognized that there was a concern there that he could alleviate, he could help that little girl have a better day. I want us to have nurturing environments and to do that, our leadership needs to be inclusive and collaborative and work with a variety of stakeholders to be considerate and transparent. We need to use multi-criteria decision-making to make sure that every voice is heard and that research is well-considered. One of the fallacies that I'd like to address is that a single campus is more fiscally responsible. Indeed, literature does not prove that out. Sometimes a single campus is financially more appropriate per pupil, but not per graduate. So students don't do as well in a single campus environment and don't persist. That is problematic. The other thing that I'd like to address is that there was a servant in July and you, the community, you said that you were not in support of any of the options that the steering committee came up with. And that is important that we listen to your voice and that's what I'd like to do should you elect me and if you're looking for the kind of leadership that I offer with my experience.
This concludes tonight's forum. We appreciate, appreciate.